Ms. Marmian, if you will lead us in the pledge. Send your closest to the flag.
Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I could ask you to remain standing. We lost one of our citizens recently, Mr. William Sapon, someone who'd been very active in our community, had led several of our building committees, and has made a great contribution, and his passing is a loss to us all. All right, next up on our agenda would normally be Wednesday's pet. However, we are very fortunately out of dogs, so that we'll not have somebody coming up from our animal control facility. So that's good news. Next up for the board is to act on the minutes, to consider and act upon the minutes. Do you want to take these? Can we take these all at once? No, I don't think we can, Kevin.
Yeah.
I think we missed one of the sessions.
I did.
So we'll take these one at a time. To consider and act upon the minutes of regular meeting, March 18, 2015, may I have a motion to accept?
So move.
A second?
Second.
Any comments or discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Next up, to hear, consider and act upon the minutes of special meeting of March 25, 2015, may I have a motion to accept?
So move.
A second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Abstentions?
Abstention.
Mr. Kylie abstains. Next up, to hear, consider and act upon the minutes of regular meeting of March 30, 2015, may I have a motion to accept?
So move.
A second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Next, to hear, consider and act upon the minutes of regular meeting, March 31, may I have a motion to accept?
So move.
A second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
And finally, generally my favorite meeting of the year, may I have a regular, a motion to accept the minutes of regular meeting, April 1, 2015?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? Abstention? Ms. Marmian abstains. Next up, item five. Recognition for the Saint Thomas Aquinas Catholic School JV Girls Basketball Team as the Diocese of Bridgeport League and CYO New England Champions. All right, Jen, I think, is coordinating, getting the team.
There they are.
And they will be led in here shortly. Wow.
Look at this.
This is what New England Champions look like.
Is.
All right.
Do you want to go there instead?
Yeah, why don't we do that?
Yeah.
Otherwise.
We can help you with logistics.
Besides formal congratulations, we certainly want to have a special shout-out to Principal Now, I was also told that a coach might want to speak, and one of us, okay, if you'd like to, come on up to the podium.
Congratulations, Ken, please.
Thank you. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, everyone. I'm Fred Palmer, along with Sean Malloy and David Highland, who couldn't be here. We have the honor of coaching this group of girls. Thank you for having them here and for this recognition. And thinking about this great win, it occurred that it's a great accomplishment, not just for the girls, but for all who helped them get there. And there's a little story behind that, of course. So Ms. Brady, working so closely with the sports committee, and all the parents who volunteered their time, a tremendous help in getting them here. So many of these girls started in the field right behind us, rec soccer, and all the parents who helped there and give them the flavor of starting to learn and try and play their sports. And then on to rec basketball. We have players who played in the Fairfield travel basketball team. We have girls who play in our lacrosse teams. We have girls who play across the spectrum of all these Fairfield sports. So it's a great time for them, for the town, and just a great testament to, I think, what a great town we have, and how much we support our kids, and what a great recognition for them. So thank you.
Well, no, thank you. And I think it's your volunteer efforts, along with other coaches, and the parents that helped, because you guys don't drive yet, right? So the parents that helped get the girls to all the places and everything. But thank you very much for the time. Having been a youth sports coach at one point, I can attest to the hours and emotions that you all put into this. So again, that's part of what makes Fairfield special, so thank you very much for that.
Thank you.
Was there one of you, one of the girls that wanted to talk, or is it pretty good?
I think we're good.
Okay. All right. Then we do have some special recognition for each of the girls. Actually, I could ask your help.
Sure.
And just kind of handing these one at a time.
Sure.
We've got a certificate for each of you as a sign of congratulations. First up is Coach Dave Highland.
I'll take it.
Okay.
All right, Dave.
All right, and Sean Mallory.
Thank you very much.
Hello? And Fred Palmer. How do we want to do this with everybody coming up?
You want me to? Let me get out of the way. I could sneak in here and hand them to you, and then the ladies could come right over this way. Would that work?
Okay, that works. Why don't, let's do that. Elizabeth Crager. Congratulations.
Thank you.
And please, let's do this over here.
Thank you.
Lauren Hurley. That's a familiar name. Congratulations.
Congratulations, Lauren.
There you go.
Your father.
There he is. That's called a beaming dad. Grace Highland. Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And Ma'v Mallory. Or Malloy. Come on, I'm sorry. Congratulations. Great name. And Caitlin May. And Claire McCurley. Anna Palmer. Congratulations.
And Shannon Redgate.
And Scarlett Rollins. Oh, wow, the tough one, the last one is always the toughest. Isadora, I've got, you've got to help me with the last name.
Sequenza.
Sequenza. All right, Isadora, come on up. She's not here. Congratulations, Isadora. Can I leave this with somebody? One of the coaches?
Sure.
All right, there you go. Thank you again. And one last round. Congratulations. Thank you for making our whole town proud. Would my colleagues like to say anything?
Please.
Sure. Congratulations, obviously. It's a great sport. Congratulations to the coaches and to the parents who have given so much of their time. Success in sports is success in life. You've learned how to compete. You've learned how to get out there. You've learned how to work as a team, so those are great skills, and you've obviously done a terrific job, so congratulations.
Thank you. Kevin?
Congratulations to all the players, the coaches, the parents, and the parish, and everyone is very proud of you on your great victory, representing our town and your church so well. Thank you and congratulations.
All right. Go get them next year, guys.
Can I take a quick photo, please? Just squeeze together. Thank you.
I'm tall enough to go to bed, and I'll sneak behind.
I will, too.
Okay. You guys in?
Coming.
Come on.
One more. Perfect. Thank you.
All right. Congratulations. Mr. Hurley. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good job, guys. All right, you know, it, you get kind of a special sense of what the coaches put in when you grow up as a son of a coach. And I remember for years watching my dad and how much he cared about his students, his players, going through all this. So it's a real kick to honor, not only the team, but the coaches that went along with that. Next up, we have recognition of Earth Day, the Earth Day Art Contest winners and Fairfield's Earth Day Celebration. The Earth Day Celebration here in town is going to be held this Saturday, April 25, at Fairfield Ward High School, from 10:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. The event is free and open to the public. We do have an Earth Day proclamation, and that I'm going to read through quickly here, and this is from the town of Fairfield. Whereas the town of Fairfield recognizes and celebrates the importance of Earth Day, which is April 22, 2015, and whereas the global community now faces extraordinary challenges such as global health issues, food and water shortages, and economic struggles, and whereas all people, regardless of race, gender, income, or geography, have a moral right to a healthy, sustainable environment with economic growth, and whereas it is understood that the citizens of the global community must step forward and take action to create a green economy to combat the aforementioned global challenges, and whereas a green economy can be achieved on the individual level through educational efforts, public policy, and consumer activism campaigns, and whereas it is necessary to broaden and diversify this global movement to achieve maximum success, and whereas the Earth Day, Earth Day is the beginning of a new year for environmental stewardship, to implement sustainability efforts and commit to an Earth Day resolution, and whereas the town of Fairfield pledges this Earth Day, April 22, 2015, to continue supporting green initiatives in our community and to encourage others to undertake similar actions, and whereas the town of Fairfield is very thankful to all the positive efforts and initiatives the Earth Day Committee has made to our community. Now therefore, I, Michael C. Tetrow, First Selectman of the Town of Fairfield, do hereby proclaim Wednesday, April 22, 2015, as Earth Day. And Ms. Mary Hoag has some comments to make to give us a little more background on what we're doing. And Mary, please introduce, not only yourself, but give us a little background on what our Earth Day Committee does.
Oh, so I'm Chair of the Fairfield Earth Day Committee. This is our 18th year. I thought it was our 17th. I learned this morning at our meeting that we have been doing this for 18 years, and we have it at Fairfield Ward. We have over 1,000 people coming on through the day. We have over 100 exhibitors coming. We have legislators coming to talk to us. We have an ice cream truck. I see our vendor in the audience, who's also part of our committee. We have many food trucks. We have our local businesses supporting us. We have sponsors. We have Maritime Motors is this ninth year supporting us at $1,000. So next year, be a decade, that's really very impressive. We have other people supporting us, and if you look at our website at www.fairfieldearthday.org, all the contest entries are on there, the winners are listed, and as well as our schedule, we have two live music venues. It's very, very family-friendly, but it's also focused on the environment. And what this, we're here today is to honor our art entries and our art contest winners. And so I just also wanted to thank our sponsors of the art contest specifically, Red Mango, all the, all the kids, no matter any entry, they get a coupon to Red Mango, and they're going to be situated outside the exhibit room that we have set up there. Mo's Liquors, A&amp;F, Ganem's, Whole Foods, and Bigelow are also, have donated things that we're going to be able to support financially, all the stuff that we're doing for your, your contest and for your winning. Sorry, I'm trying to go fast because there's so many of you. I want to introduce Emma Gleistine. She's a junior at Fairfield Ward High School, and she's our, this year's Chair.
Hi, so honestly, I'm Emma Gleistine. I want to say thanks to everyone who, you know, submitted to the contest. They're all amazing, and congratulations to the winners. I'm going to list off the names. Some people aren't here. If you're representing them, you can come up and get their certificate, and if you hear your name, just come up.
Why don't we circulate up so we can kind of congratulate the winners who came through?
Sure.
And because there's so many, you just have them coming up and going back, right?
Yeah.
Are you in the same sequence where?
Yeah, they're all in alphabetical order.
All right, here we are.
Okay. Angel Aviles.
Is Angel back there?
Someone's here for her. She's not here, but Ziniya Benaji, and same with Sophia Bonin. Kendall Brown for Visual Arts in high school.
All right, Kendall.
These next four are not here. Cynthia Catio, Sophia Sichoni, Megi Shodri, and Peter Daly. Oh, I think Megi's here. Oh, Megi for Visual Arts.
You're here?
Yep.
Are you sure?
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. Grace Elliott for Film Production.
Do we have a second certificate for Megi?
Yeah, it's easy. Oh, Megi's here.
Okay, what did we just hand out there? Who's here?
Did Megi just come up?
You're Meg, right?
Yeah.
So Sophia?
Did you get the right one?
No, she didn't. Sorry, Sophia.
Oh, these are not circled. Sorry. People who are here are supposed to circle.
Are there two for Megi?
No, just one.
Yeah, she wants, she entered twice.
Okay, thank you.
So we have two certificates. Congratulations.
Grace Elliott, yes, we just called her up.
Okay. Right there. Careful. See where you're going. Did we call Grace?
Mm-hmm. She just came up.
Here we are. There's Grace. Congratulations.
Harrison Elliott for Literature.
Congratulations.
Rachel Grella for Literature.
Congratulations.
Charlotte Hill.
Is Charlotte here?
I don't think so. Jonah Lee for Literature.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Good job.
Caleb.
Jonah Lee has two then, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, Jonah, you get a second one also.
I tried.
Good job.
Caleb Martin for Film Production. Not here.
Oh, yeah, sure.
Kayla?
I can accept it if you have. She's much prettier than you.
Hayden Mattis for Photography.
Congratulations.
Elizabeth McNamara. Katerina Sardo for Literature.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. She's going to have a picture, sorry. Turn around, Karen.
There you go.
Sardo? She has Sardo. Sardo.
Yeah, Sardo.
Oh, there we are. Sorry.
Yeah, she's, she entered twice.
Good job.
Kate Warren. For Musical Composition.
Get out of here. Are you like one of those prodigy people? That's just superb.
Kate, turn, oh, should I take you back?
Come on back. Hey, get a lot of this in mind.
Yeah. Sweet, thank you.
And Ellie Whitlock for Visual Arts.
What tremendous talent. Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
All right.
And that's everybody.
Big hand all the way. All right.
I want to show you the tickets. Thank you so much.
Thanks, guys.
Because they hold the tickets.
The more winners, the better. This is a good thing.
Hey, Mary?
Oh, Mary?
Will any of the works be exhibited at the Earth Day? I'm sorry, I'm blabbering. Sorry. That's okay.
Yes, all the entries are going to be exhibited at Earth Day all day.
What?
And it's going to be at Fairfield Ward Lecture Room. And we also encourage all the people that submitted to pick up their artwork, hopefully at the end of the day, so that everyone can see all the great work. And we have, for the most part, somebody found us out. We missed a few of the visual arts, but the literature and the visual arts are up. And where's my friend Tim? Tim is going to help me get the videos up, because that's just like a little farther than my ability at this point, so.
And officially, there's the proclamation.
Yay, and we will display this at Earth Day.
Excellent.
Thank you so much.
Thank you for your work.
Thank you so much.
All right, next up, item seven on our agenda, which is a resignation, and this is for information only, from the Flood and Erosion Control Board. Timothy DeBarlo Meo, Republican from 403 Donapage Road, for a term of 1112 through 1117, and he resigned just last week. Item eight, appointments. To hear, consider and act upon the following appointment. This is to the Flood and Erosion Control Board. Donald Lamberdy, Republican, 75 French Street, for a term of 1112 through 1117, to fill the vacancy for Mr. DeBarlo Meo, who resigned. May I have a motion to accept?
So move.
A second?
Second.
Is Mr. Lamberdy here?
He's here.
Very good. Any questions or comments from the board?
I just want to thank you for volunteering. You have a great background, and I'm sure you'll do a lot of great work on the board. Thank you very much.
Sheila?
I would echo that. You've got a great resume, very interesting, second career as a teacher, really impressive, and I think you'll bring a lot of great expertise to the board, so thank you for your volunteerism.
And I just, again, echo my colleague's comments, but also point out that this is a very exciting time in the Flood and Erosion Control Board. We are in the middle of kind of reviewing a draft plan for the beach area in terms of what's taking place. We also have the Army Corps of Engineers stepping up through Congressman Hines to help provide flood mitigation throughout the New Haven and Fairfield counties along the coast. So there's a lot going on as opposed to 10 or 15 years ago, when things were a little bit slower. So I want to thank you for stepping up to volunteer at this crucial juncture, and look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you very much again.
Thank you.
Are we ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, congratulations. All right, next up, and this is an item that will require the Board of Finance and RTM approval, and a report from Town Planning and Zoning. And this is to hear, consider and act upon the following resolution. Resolve that the town of Fairfield purchase an undivided two-thirds interest in the property known as 908 Fairfield Beach Road. Assessors map number 184, lot 185, from the McKenzie Family Trust and James Y. Atkins for the sum of $268,000, as more particularly set forth in real estate sales agreement between said parties. And further resolve that the funds for the purchase of said property be taken from the H. Smith Richardson Conservation Trust, subject to the approval of the Conservation Commission, and that the first selectment be and hereby is authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the use of said funds. Further resolve that in the event the Conservation Commission does not approve the use of said funds, or approve less than the amount sufficient to purchase said property, then in the event the bond resolution entitled, a resolution approving $275,000 for the costs associated with the acquisition of real property, and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation, be and hereby is approved, to be reduced by any sums, sums allowed to be used from the H. Smith Richardson Conservation Trust. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right, and then let me, Attorney Lester, why don't you come up, and I'm going to try and summarize this, kind of what I just read, and you can fill in any pieces and give us a more thorough description of the event. But basically, the town owns a third interest in a property down on Fairfield Beach Road. We have two choices. The other two-thirds of interest have decided to sell the property. So we can either buy it from them, that's option A, and that's what we're proposing, or option B, if this doesn't pass, the property would be sold, and the town would receive one-third of the proceeds minus a prorated share of the sales expenses. Did I get that right?
I think you did.
All right. Attorney Lester, if you would introduce yourself and take us through this.
I'm Stan Lester, Town Attorney. Very briefly, we were approached by Attorney Peter Penzer, who indicated that he represented two people, or actually a trust, that owned two-thirds of a building lot on Fairfield Beach Road, the other third being owned by the town. And we apparently inherited that from the other one-third owner of the property some time ago. He indicated, as Mike said, he indicated that his clients would like to either sell the property or have us buy them out. And so we entered into negotiations, and First Selectman Tetrow asked that an appraisal be done. We selected an appraiser, and an appraisal was done, which came back with a fair market value of $400,000. So we entered into a contract with the, with the trust, whereby we will be paying them two-thirds of the $400,000, or $268,000, and that is subject to the approval of the various bodies that need to approve it. So that's part of the contract, that it's, it's not an unconditional contract. There are conditions. Quite, we've taken a look, this is, it's a two-acre piece. It's on the north side of Fairfield Beach Road. It's, we, I went before the Land Acquisition Committee and presented it to them. They unanimously approved it. They said it'd be a great addition to the town's stock of open space. I know that-
All right, next up, item seven on our agenda. Which is a resignation, and this is for information only, from the Flood and Erosion Control Board. Timothy DeBarlo-Mayo, Republican from 403 Donapage Road, for a term of 1112 through 1117. And he resigned just last week. Item eight, appointments. To hear, consider and act upon the following appointment. This is to the Flood and Erosion Control Board. Donald Lammerty, Republican, 75 French Street, for a term of 1112 through 1117, 17, to fill the vacancy for Mr. DeBarlo-Mayo, who resigned. May I have a motion to accept? Some more. A second.
Second.
Is Mr. Lammerty here?
He's here.
Very good. Any questions or comments from the board?
I just want to thank you for volunteering. You have a great background, and I'm sure you'll do a lot of great work on the board. Thank you very much.
Sheila?
I would echo that. You've got a great resume, very interesting, second career as a teacher, really impressive, and I think you'll bring a lot of great expertise to the board, so thank you for your volunteerism.
Thank you.
And I just, again, echo my colleagues' comments, but also point out that this is a very exciting time in the Flood and Erosion Control Board. We are in the middle of kind of reviewing a draft plan for the beach area in terms of what's taking place. We also have the Army Corps of Engineers stepping up through Congressman Hines to help provide flood mitigation throughout the New Haven and Fairfield Counties along the coast. So there's a lot going on as opposed to 10 or 15 years ago when things were a little bit slower. So I want to thank you for stepping up to volunteer at this crucial juncture and look forward to working with you in the future. Thank you very much again.
Thank you.
Are we ready to vote?
Mm-hmm.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right, congratulations. All right, next up, and this is an item that will require the Board of Finance and RTM approval and a report from Town Planning and Zoning. This is to hear, consider and act upon the following resolution. Resolve that the town of Fairfield purchase an undivided two-thirds interest in the property known as 908 Fairfield Beach Road. Assessors map number 184, lot 185, from the McKenzie Family Trust and James Y. Atkins for the sum of $268,000, as more particularly set forth in real estate sales agreement between said parties. And further resolve that the funds for the purchase of said property be taken from the H. Smith Richardson Conservation Trust, subject to the approval of the Conservation Commission, and that the First Selectman be and hereby is authorized to execute any and all documents necessary to effectuate the use of said funds. Further resolve that in the event the Conservation Commission does not approve the use of said funds, or approve less than the amount sufficient to purchase said property, then in the event the bond resolution entitled, a resolution appropriating $275,000 for the costs associated with the acquisition of real property and authorizing the issuance of bonds to finance such appropriation, be and hereby is approved, to be reduced by any sums allowed to be used from the H. Smith Richardson Conservation Trust. May I have a motion to accept?
Some more.
A second.
Second.
All right, and then let me, Attorney Lester, why don't you come up? And I'm going to try and summarize this, kind of what I just read, and you can fill in any pieces and give us a more thorough description. But basically, the town owns a third interest in a property down on Fairfield Beach Road. We have two choices. The other two-thirds of interest have decided to sell the property. So we can either buy it from them, that's option A, and that's what we're proposing, or option B, if this doesn't pass, the property would be sold and the town would receive one-third of the proceeds minus a prorated share of the sales expenses. Did I get that right?
I think you did.
All right. Attorney Lester, if you would introduce yourself and take us through this.
I'm Stan Lester, Town Attorney. Very briefly, we were approached by Attorney Peter Penzer, who indicated that he represented two people, or actually a trust, that owned two-thirds of a building lot on Fairfield Beach Road, the other third being owned by the town. And we apparently inherited that from the other one-third owner of the property some time ago. He indicated, as Mike said, he indicated that his clients would like to either sell the property or have us buy them out. And so we entered into negotiations, and First Selectman Tetro asked that an appraisal be done. We selected an appraiser, and an appraisal was done, which came back with a fair market value of $400,000. So we entered into a contract with the trust whereby we will be paying them two-thirds of the $400,000, or $268,000. And that is subject to the approval of the various bodies that need to approve it. So that's part of the contract, that it's not an unconditional contract. There are conditions. We've taken a look, this is, it's a two-acre piece. It's on the north side of Fairfield Beach Road. I went before the Land Acquisition Committee and presented it to them. They unanimously approved it. They said it'd be a great addition to the town's stock of open space. I know that our former Conservation Director has opined on this in a detailed report, and he actually has come here today to address the board if you would like to hear from him. But he, I think, feels very strongly that this would, again, be a great addition to the town. I'm not going to put words in his mouth, but I know that it does provide access to the marsh, and it can be used for staging and other things like that. In order to pass this, just on a strict purchase alone, what has to happen is the First Selectman negotiated the agreement. The Board of Selectmen would then approve this agreement. It would then go to TPZ for a report, and then to the RTM for their approval, financing aside, if there were no need for financing. The TPZ is simply a report, and they cannot veto this. But if their report is negative, the RTM would have to approve the purchase by a two-thirds vote rather than a simple majority. So they get to report on it. If they said no, then the RTM could still approve it, but it would have to be two-thirds. As far as financing goes, we had initially proposed to bond this, and I discussed that with the First Selectman, and that's why the resolution reads as it does. However, we discovered that there is a trust fund that's owned by the town called the H. Smith Richardson Trust, in which there is more than enough money to purchase this. In order for money to be expended from this trust, it requires approval of the Board of Selectmen, in concert with the Conservation Commission. And then, if this is going to be the expenditure of principal from the trust, which I believe it will, although I'm not sure, it would also require approval of the Board of Finance. That's under the terms of the trust. So if this board sees fit to approve it, then we'd send it off to TPZ. It would go to the Conservation Commission. I know Kevin Gumpert, who's the Chairman of the Commission, is here to address the Commission. And also Peter Penzer's here, if you have questions of him. And Ed Jones is also here from the Conservation Department. I think they want this piece, frankly. But it would go to Conservation, and they would then vote on it. And if it's determined that it is principal, it would have to go to the Board of Finance for their approval also. The way I've worded the resolution is if the Conservation Commission, or for that matter, the Board of Finance, does not approve the use of all the funds from this trust, then the town would go ahead and bond the balance. There are some costs that are associated with this, and they are the cost of the appraisal and the cost of the survey. You have a survey map there. Those two items total around $1,600. It's not an exact figure. It's a ballpark figure. It's probably accurate to within a couple of hundred dollars. We are responsible for a third of that, or about $500. There would be some costs associated with the purchase. We would have title insurance. I would have a title search done. Those costs are somewhere around $1,500. So I think you're talking, even though the resolution's for $275,000, that was a number put in, I think, by the Finance Department, I would say that it's not going to cost $7,000 in extra costs. My guess is somewhere between $2,000 and $3,000 for closing costs. I'm happy to answer questions. Anyone, we have a whole group here to answer, who may actually be more qualified than myself.
Any question? Go ahead, Sheila.
So it says in the background that this is a buildable lot.
Yes.
In order for the Conservation Department to be involved and to access their trust, et cetera, do we need to make some sort of a notice that this would be used as open space or designated as open space versus a developable, you know, a developable lot?
When the town acquires property, if the RTM does not specify the use for the property, by default, it becomes open space, subject to the jurisdiction of the Conservation Commission. So if we just buy this piece, and nobody's, and just, we buy it, it will be open space, without any further action.
Okay. And my second question is, the taxes on this piece of property?
There will be no more taxes.
No more taxes?
No, the town will own it.
Okay. Okay.
All right. Just to clarify that for a moment, though.
Yes.
There was an appraisal on the town rolls, I think, that had a much lower assessment or praise value. Don't think it was assessed, was it assessed as open space, or, but certainly not as a buildable lot?
I'm not even sure. I think you have, you probably have the vision sheet in your backup.
Yes.
I don't, it might not have been assessed as a building lot. And I checked with zoning, I checked with Jim Went, and it's high enough, there is enough land above the required level to make this a building lot.
And the...
So we're going out, the clarification was, A, we went out and had a new appraisal done. We did not just go to the grand list of the town and pull that number off.
Okay.
That appraisal assumes it's a building lot as part of that piece, as I understand it. So the purchase price is based on it being a building lot. We went to zoning and had Assistant Planning and Zoning Director Jim Went review it, make sure it's most probable, A, building lots, and we were kind of negotiating good faith on that background.
Was. It was appraised as a building lot.
You've got to talk to the mic if you're going to say something.
Yes, there was, I'm Pete Penzer, I'm a lawyer, I'm a counsel to Green and Gross in Bridgeport. And the, there was, the appraisal was based upon the, on the lot as-is, and as-is and where it is. But there was a survey done by the Huntington Company, and I provided the copy of the survey to the town. And there was also, in conjunction with that, there was soil mapped on that same map. And it shows quite clearly, I've had them calculate what size house could go on it. A 5,000-square-foot house could go on the lot. And so that's a good-sized house. But the town does own one-third, and my clients own the other two-thirds, and they're not around here, they're interested in selling. So, do you have any other questions about it?
Well, I guess this may be for the Conservation Department, but I'm just wondering about the open space aspect of it. Would it be accessible to the public? Would we have paths? Or are we protecting it so that we have the wildlife and the marsh, et cetera? What are the plans for the Conservation Department?
That's not my company.
Thank you, Mr. Penzer. Can Mr. Jones come up and fill us in a bit on his thoughts, or?
Thoughts about the use of the open space.
Unless you wanted to speak with the Commission on that?
First, if I could, I'm not sure I know exactly the answer to this, not least question, so we'll leave that to Mr. Jones. I would say the speaking on behalf of the Conservation Commission, the Conservation Commission is very much in favor of acquiring this property. We voted unanimously to do it at our last meeting. I want to clarify that we've not yet made a decision as to whether we would use the H. Smith Richardson Trust money for that purpose. Some of the benefits, one of the benefits to this piece of property is that although it is long and narrow, it runs from Fairfield Beach Road all the way to the creek. We town presently owns a piece of property adjacent to the one we're talking about that is on the creek, but it does not run all the way to Fairfield Beach Road. So this will give us access not only to the creek, but to our other property. We'll have a fairly good-sized piece of property right on the creek that will be very useful for maintenance purposes, especially during Sandy. There was an enormous amount of junk debris that was in the river and the marsh there, and we had quite a bit of difficulty getting to it. Mr. Jones has told the Commission, and I'm sure he'll tell you, that we can get access to the creek from the other side, from off of Pine Creek Road, but to get into the, it's very difficult with the equipment. It's a danger to the people, it's a danger to the riverbank, it's there, the creek bank. It's also a danger to our equipment to try to cross the creek and get stuff on both sides. So the access would be very important to the town, just for flood control and general conservation purposes. I always like to see the conservation land used as conservation land. Sometimes strike some of our staff, it's not something that should be done, but we'd like to put a path in. Whether that's really feasible here or not, I don't know. But I think our position at the Conservation was, even if it couldn't be used for passive recreation for the town of Fairfield, nevertheless, it was a worthwhile acquisition due to its location and the way it butts the property next door.
Thank you.
Got any questions of Kevin or...
Yes. Attorney Gumpert, thank you for being here. Appreciate that very much. Can you just help me better understand a little bit about the H. Smith Richardson Trust Fund, how it works, and what approvals are necessary?
Why, sure.
If it's not inappropriate, what levels of funding are available or in there? I just don't know much about that.
Well, here, Mr. Richardson gave the town, it's the H. Smith Richardson Golf Course. He also gave the town, and his wife gave the town, property, open space property, the Hoytins Hill property that it butts and has all around there. He also gave the town $50,000. And they did that in August of 1971. John Sullivan was the first selectman at the time. $10,000 of that money was used to pay for improvements to the Hoytins Hill open space area. $40,000 was taken by the town, not by Mr. Richardson, but by the town, and put into a trust with what was then State National Bank. The purpose of the trust was to use the income and perhaps some of the principal from time to time for general conservation purposes. It may have been everyone's contemplation that it would be used for the golf course area, but it does not say that. It might also be everyone's contemplation that it was Mr. Smith's money, Mr. Richardson's money, but it wasn't. He gave the money to the town, the town put the money in the trust. The original trust said it would terminate in 10 years from when it was put on, and the money would go back to the town. It was not going back to Mr., to the H. Smith Richardson family. So that is town money. Over the years, apparently, it's not been used for much, because now, out of that $40,000, there's $407,000 plus in the trust. The trust itself says that, and it was, the trust agreement was changed in 1990, when Jackie Durrell was First Selectman, to make the trust be continuous. The one rule on the trust is it's supposed to always have $30,000 in it. If it ever has less than $30,000, there's no penalty, it's just that the trust ends, the money goes back to the town. For general, and I think it just goes into the town's general fund. I don't think there's any, in fact, there's no specification that I could see about it. And the actual provision in the trust is that the money can be used, the principal can be used, for such worthwhile and necessary conservation purposes as have been approved by the Board of Selectmen of the town of Fairfield in conjunction with the Conservation Commission, and with respect to the amount of any principal disbursements, subject to the approval of the Board of Finance.
Good. Thank you for that background. I really do appreciate that. That's all news to me.
Okay. Was news to me until yesterday.
Now, my follow-up question is, and you probably can't answer this, I have other people, but does this appear to be something that's an appropriate use of those funds within this trust document?
I believe that it is. I don't see any restrictions in the original First Selectman's presentation at the similar meeting when they discussed this in 1971. John Sullivan talked about the fact that this money would be useful for, to perpetuate the Smith Richardson area at Hoytins Hill, an area of natural scenic beauty, by having funds for the upkeep and maintenance of this particular project. But there was no restriction then in the trust that that's all it would be used for. I have heard, I've been told by one of our staff, Betty Gabriel, that there are letters back and forth, contemporaneous, that may outline it, but I've not seen those letters and don't know what they say.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sure there's a lot of history there as well.
There might be a lot. But, you know, and now it's been, it's 40, 45 years now since it was started. We have done work in the Hoytins Hill area, a lot of which, we've never funded it with this money. And...
That was my very next question.
I'm not, if you're going to ask me, why didn't we use this money to do some of those projects? Like I said, I didn't, you know? There was some confusion, I think, for quite a while as to how much was in this fund, whether the fund existed, et cetera. And so I don't know the background.
So it's like finding the bag of money in the wall after 40 years.
It seems to be almost exactly that, yes.
But it appears to be an appropriate use, based on what we know, or what you can interpret at the time, and it doesn't sound like anything that, speaking for yourself as well, or just for yourself.
Well, just for myself, it seems to be an appropriate use of the money. I would love it if we could, you know, use the money, then get it, get a grant to pay us back, but I don't know whether that, that timing works out. Because I, now that we see we have this money, if we could use it for, different discussion, different time, but there was a number of pieces of property that the Conservation Commission would love to get a hold of, largely for more of our conservation rather than recreation, but more like flood control and that type of stuff. And if we could use this as seed money or get matching grants, it would be very useful. And I think that's probably going to be the factor that determines whether the Conservation Commission on this particular event wants to use all of this, you know, the whole 268, is it 268? 260, yes. The whole 268, or whether we want to half of it, or whatever. But I think, I can't speak to the Commission on that.
Correct.
We've got, that's a good commission with a lot of strong members on it.
And I'm sure it'll be a robust discussion.
I'm sure.
Thank you so much for that. I'm good on that. I have another question on the maps. I'm not sure who to go to on that.
Just a follow-up on what he said. That's why I've worded the resolution. So I think I would ask this body to decide, if in fact, these other boards do not approve money from the trust, if you think it's a good idea that the town acquire this piece, that you approve the bonding also, so we don't have to come back again, go through the process again. It'd be kind of a conditional approval, so. Originally, we were just going to come in and ask for bonding, and then it was discovered that this money is there, so. I don't know who else you need to...
Mr. Collier, what question do you have?
Yeah, I'm just trying to relate this map to this map over here, and I'm not expert in this, but when I'm reading the survey map over here, it talks about parcels 184 and 185. And when I look over here, obviously, 184 and 185 are next to each other. So this map appears to be, I believe, a map of both of these parcels. So are we talking about the 2.1-acre number 185, or the 1.85-acre 184? It can't be both, right? This is...
It's map number 184, parcel number 185.
Oh, is that, that's why I'm confused? Just, it's just coincidence that the numbers are the same? So we're looking at parcel 184?
No, you're looking at 185.
185.
Which is a two acres. It's a two acre.
Two acres.
So that's the two, okay. 2.1. Thank you.
Does that make sense? Okay.
Do you have any follow-on questions?
None at the moment. I'll defer to my comments.
Go ahead.
If I could ask Mr. Jones to come up and tell us a little bit about what you envision Conservation doing with this property, and why it's beneficial? What's your thoughts are?
This may make a little more sense.
Okay.
As a map, as the town top of that, has 184, 185.
Yeah, I was just...
Tennis court. That's next door. It's not a tennis court.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Jones. Yes, this is helpful.
That's Edward Jones.
Thanks.
Open Space Manager, what is compliance with the Conservation Department. Now, this is a full-sized survey drawing that you have, I guess, on an 11 by 17.
Right.
There's an upland area to the frontage, and the house is shown, the proposed house, the house on property as it sits. This would be an upland area, be accessed to the public. There's area for parking along the frontage. It stands now, it's pretty much a dump. There's college rentals next door, so you can imagine what's come over the fence. That's to the west. There's also an approach, a fence that's not showing on the plot plan. From that property, it would have to be resolved at some point. I don't know if it has standing as a first possession or not, it's something that should be figured out before you take full ownership of it. It may be as simple as removing parts of parking spaces, a stockade fence, unless the present owner is going to... the present owner is going to make a motion for adverse possession. I don't believe that would, if they did take that, I don't think it would really affect the value of the property and they would still need the approval from TPNC, it's a building lot. I'm also looking at, I'm reticent about using 2/3 of the trust fund for one property. It's the only thing, it's there to be used for such things, but I think we should explore heavily town-wide matching funds through bonding. There's also, I believe, I've done a web search, there may be like three different grants that we can apply for, and they have matching funds. Thing is, it's a matter of time. Be this time next year before all the grants that we would be applying for would be issued. That's the one timeframe. That is a problem. I don't know exactly.
I would suggest, at the very least, why don't we talk tomorrow? Go through those and identify if there's an actual item for any of those grants that might be workable with this and look at what our options are.
Well, one of them would be for the migratory waterfowl. This does backup on the marsh. Water watchers could use the area. This wouldn't be what we would term a destination, if you will. It's not large enough. We'd have a small sign, a complication for three or four parking spaces, maybe a bench or something in there. We would clear out the understore and all the invases. There are a couple of, I would call specimen native flora in there that I haven't seen. It's like shad blow or blueberries. It's gotta be 30 feet tall. There's also blueberry in there. We would have to do an extensive cleanup of bottles, cans, some trash bags, maybe some minor grading if there's anything that somebody would step into and twist an ankle. And then some fencing and just signage along the way. With the college kids in the neighborhood, it's gonna be litter problems, but we have that on other open spaces. We can surely handle that. And there's other abductions. It's within the flood zone. This was totally underwater on the drainage standing. And to take it off of the housing row with residents, there's one less residence, you might have to go in with a dump and take the people out more. Go in with a skiff like our crew went down and had to help people out in the areas. People resisted and evacuated. It's one less load, you know, on the sewer plant. One less load of police department, fire department. There's no real services that would have there. Another residence may incur.
Any questions?
Yes, those comments are a segue into my next question, which is the basis for the valuation or the basis for the appraisal. Because what I've heard is that we're basing the appraisal on the fact that this is a building lot or could be, right? And there's where the 400,000 comes from versus something significantly less if we're not a building lot, correct? So what I don't know is what the exact process would be to put this particular piece of land through the zoning process to have it qualify as a building lot based on the fact that it was underwater completely a couple of years ago. And I'm not sure who could answer that question, but it seems like we're kind of assuming that in moving forward with that presumption. And I don't know the entire basis for assuming it's a building lot before it actually becomes a building lot.
It's my understanding that this lot meets all the requirements of the zone for area, for frontage, so all you have to do is file an application and you'll get, you'll get a zoning permit. It doesn't have to go to zoning.
You would not have to go? It's not overly complicated based on flooding or other issues that?
There's enough, what they do is they determine, there's a, there's a level, an elevation, and they determine how much land there is above that elevation. And if there's more than 9,325 feet, which I think is the building lot size in the beach zone, you get, and there's like, I think there's 13,000 where 9,000 is required. So I asked Jim Wend, all you need to do is go in, file your application, they'll issue compliance. And this is not, and this is not, this is not inland wetlands either. It's, it's not under the jurisdiction of the Unabated Agency here. It's title wetlands, so. So it's a lot. It's a building lot.
So we are.
I'm sorry. So that line that Stanton was just speaking about, I think would be the coast of jurisdiction line that the state puts down. That's a certain elevation. First, the TPNC recognizes everything above that as upland, and the other things are counted into the compensation for that minimum buildable area.
So what I'm hearing is that we are collectively comfortable that this would qualify for a building lot by everyone who has looked at it or knows about it? Is that what?
I think the appraisal was modest, but it may take into account that you have the elevating structure. They would have to sink piers because it is old filled on top of marshes. So the construction costs are higher than would be for a collectible building that did require elevation and pilings.
Appreciate that. Thank you.
And Mr. Colley, I don't know if you're aware, if you look on this map, there's a zoning grid. The survey rent is on the upper corner. There's a zoning grid which does indicate what's required in the zone and the existing conditions. So you'll see that it meets all the existing conditions, requirements.
So we are collectively comfortable that it would, that it would qualify is what I'm hearing? I just don't know enough to know whether it's close on the line or it's definitely good to go.
No, Jim Wend said it's, it meets the requirements.
Okay. Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. I have a question on the adverse possession. Can somebody speak to that?
I'm not aware of a, I'm looking at the map. I asked Attorney Penzer.
Can you ask Ed, since he's here? Mr. Jones, could you point out your, where your, the area of concern for adverse possession?
The encroachment. I did not see it.
It's not on the survey. I don't know why they picked it up. They picked up a chain link fence along the west of the property line.
Well, first of all, if we're gonna talk, we really need to do it closer to the mic so everybody can hear. But I'm just trying to get a clarity on that issue a bit here. Gentlemen, can you speak at the mic, please?
I'm sorry, this is Ed Jones again. Point of encroachment along the west of the property line, you'll see where the chain link fence ends on the survey. That ends out at the field. They did not describe that. It comes in another eight to 10 feet. There's a section of stockade fence, if you will.
At the end of the chain link?
Yeah, that comes to the east onto the property and then proceeds up, back to the marsh edge where they've expanded their parking.
Can you kinda draw it on here a little bit so I don't mess it up? I'm just curious, because this is a great question. Just give us a specific.
Yeah, I'm following where he is.
I'm gonna pass it down.
And it goes like this.
Okay. So is that little chunk of piece, is that chunk of land you're talking about?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't, it doesn't really affect any of the TPNC numbers, so that's, that's not an issue, but it's something that we should clarify with them.
Okay. Okay, Peter, do you have a second? Looks like it's just a little long rectangle up here on the west side.
Like one section comes out.
Okay. So it's about eight feet in width and it looks like 20, 25 long? Give it a take?
There is a structure here. I don't believe it meets the minimum side or segment. There's a structure out here also.
Okay. All right. It's about eight feet wide.
Just one other, just one other. Thirty, thirty long. Yeah, sure. I don't know. If you'll, if you'll look here, I don't know how far back the John Q. C.'s property goes and where the town of Fairfield's property starts. So it may be that Fairfield owns some of this piece down there. I don't know. So, and in any event, I don't think that, even if, even if this, this little section did not belong to us, I don't think that affects our use of the property at all.
The ground on the inside, it doesn't, doesn't change anything. And the requirement for, for adverse possession, probably not met because it's open, it's notorious, on the claim of right, no one has ever claimed the right.
Well, Peter, Mr. Penzer, if you could speak to the mic, please, just so we get.
Yeah, I, I think that, two things. One is the amount of land involved there.
And if I could, for the folks in back, if we could have one conversation, and it's taking place up here, if you'd like to talk, I'd ask you to adjourn to the hall. Thank you.
Yeah, the amount of land involved there, it's immaterial to the, to the calculations for whether or not it's a lot or a building lot. Secondly, I'm not sure that the requirements for, for adverse possession, in fact, are met because they're open, notorious, claim of right. Someone has to go there, someone has to claim that it's theirs, actually. The fact that you have something mislocated by a, by a, by a surveyor or something like that doesn't make it adverse possession. Just because a fence is there doesn't make it adverse possession.
It's my understanding that you can't enforce adverse possession against the town, municipality, or state.
That's correct.
The fact that we own a third of this, does that exempt that from this or not?
You know what? Probably, but.
It's possible. I don't know how long we've actually owned it, so I suppose someone could claim way back when it's been with more than 15 years. I think they're gonna have a hard time knowing. I just, I, I, it's not something I'm concerned about quite frankly. I think we have to work it out with the neighbor. It doesn't affect the value to the town at all.
Nor, nor would, nor would the amount involved there make it worthwhile. Anybody going through that process probably would cost them more, would cost them more to go through the process than they would gain by, by doing it, so.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Does anybody have any more questions for Mr. Jones at this time?
I have a question on the timing for the attorney.
Okay.
For the sellers.
For me?
For the sellers.
Me?
Yeah.
I didn't know I should work. Yes, you are.
Yes, I'm sorry.
I'm just wondering, timing-wise, the immediacy of this potential sale. I mean, does this need to happen sooner than later? We, we heard that we might want more time to look for some matching grants.
Well, let me put it this way. There were, one of the two, one of the two people has recently died. The other one is, has the same age as I am, was in grammar school with me. And they would like to have the money. They, the, the question is, the short answer to your question is yes, they would like to get it done now. It's not as though someone can wait to enjoy this any length of time.
Okay. Thank you.
And if it's okay with my colleagues, what I'd like to do is invite Mr. Stanky up to the mic to offer his comments and share his insights, because for so long he was our conservation director and.
Just for the record, I believe in your package, there is a report that was engineered by Mr. Stanky about this.
And Mr. Stanky, no specific questions, but certainly we'd love you to share your thoughts and wisdom and guidance for the town.
Tom Stanky, former conservation director, help of Fairfield. The, it's one of the loose ends, I guess, that I'm here to speak to endorsing this proposal. The property, it holds, well, the town holds an undivided 1/3 interest in the property. And it became apparent when this came in, I'd say at least 10 years ago, as a gift for open space purposes from the owner in Westport, and the town accepted the gift under those terms. At this time, over the previous two hurricanes, we've, in three years now, the town has found that it is isolated from this large marsh area with access, with no access from Fairfield Beach Road. And it's of value to the town for mosquito management, mosquito control purposes for, we used the area for consolidating over beach overwashed sand from Sandy and before it could be redistributed to the, to the beaches. And it's a bit of a hook, so it caught a lot of floating debris and we had to access that from, from a one-ride highway crossing the channel with special equipment. I think pulled out about six tons of material. Very difficult, took a lot of time, and it's something that would, would be a benefit, a great benefit to the town. For, for open space, wildlife habitat, marsh restoration, mosquito control with frag mighties, fire control now, but when the self-regulating tide gates go in at the, at the dike behind the, the hump dike behind the fire training area, we should see a considerable reduction in frag and any fire potential. And at, at that point, you're looking at, at the benefits that would be continued to achieve would be related to the flood protection in the area. My recommendation is, is the town acquire the remaining 2/3 so that we, the town doesn't place a family in this, in this area. I think it's, it's something we learn, if it can be, to be avoided. So with that in mind, my recommendation is, is the town would, if it were to treat it as open space, to continue it, to go in and clean it out. It's, it's been accumulating debris from flood events in the past, from neighbors tossing things. It, it should be, should be cleaned out. A low fence, a delineator of the property line, something with a little opening that would allow visitors to commit. As Mr. Jones said, it's not a destination property, but it would be open, I would hope, to the public. Perhaps a, a small sign on the side that would identify it as, as town property as such. And in the future, when the, a similar event occurs for, that we experienced with Hurricane Sandy, the town would have, if it acquired the entire property, it would have the upland portion of it for stockpiling debris and sand, which would be, be very helpful, and equipment that it needs to deploy in the, in the area. And in the future, we'll, roughly every 10 to 15 years, we'd be back for debris cleaning up, clearing out the sand, overwashed sand that went into the channels for mosquito control. It would be first-rate wildlife habitat of marsh nature. One of the observations we have is the marsh sparrow, rare species down here, and the only place we have in Fairfield is where the town has already restored its salt marshes. It's not found out on the, on the open marsh, but in the, in the marshes that are behind the dikes and the self-regulated tide gates. Any questions? Just, I guess, one, one thought. With that undivided 1/3 interest, if the town decided not to acquire the property, I would recommend that, that preferentially, that it separate, it's 120-foot frontage now, separate 1/3 of it for the town property. That would leave 2/3 and a, I believe, a built-up lot for the owners from California. If that were not possible, then I would recommend that the town obtain a access easement to get into that marsh and to be able to recover, retrieve, carry on its mosquito control programs and what have you in the future. Thank you.
Thank you for your time.
And Tom, thank you for coming back and sharing with us today.
It's a privilege to be here for 43 years, I'll tell you that.
That's wonderful.
Likewise.
Forty-three years and two arms?
Forty.
All right. Any further discussion for the board? Okay to go to the public?
Yeah, I can answer, but I can wait.
Any comments from the public? All right, seeing none back of the board?
Yeah.
It's comments as opposed to questions, Mr. Grau.
Yeah, if it's assessed for 400,000.
Mr. Grau, you need to come up to the podium, if you would? And you understand it's a comment as opposed to a question?
You said it's currently assessed for 400,000, or not assessed, appraised. What's its current assessment and taxes now?
All right, that's an interesting comment, not a question, but yes. What's the, what is it on the grand list?
On 115,000 is the fair market value. I think it's, the assessment's 70% of that, I believe.
All right. So it's, it's got a current market value of about a fourth of what the appraisal was. Tom brought up a good point of allowing someone to develop the property. You've got all your utilities in the road, and at the same time, extract an easement from them to get in and clean the marsh. And I'm sure town could use the taxes. If it's a 400,000 dollar building lot, by the time you get a property on it, a building on it, you're probably taxing them $20,000 a year. You have to spend $225,000, take it off the tax rolls. And I know every time I've been on boards, you're always looking for more money to do things, and now you're taking money away. I just question why. I just question why.
Thank you, Mr. Grau.
If I respond to that, I'm not gonna put words in Attorney Penzer's mouth, but I don't think that the other two-thirds owners are interested in doing that. I think it's either put the property on the market, sell it, divide up the proceeds, or let them be bought out. They could force us through a partition action to do that. I don't know, I don't think they want to do that. I was going to just make a comment before you made yours, Mr. Kylie, that I think that the other owners of this property have been very fair. I'm not gonna mention their names because they haven't been mentioned. I don't know that they want to at this point, but Attorney Penzer came to us, he said, "Look, we'll get it appraised." They didn't say, "We want 100,000 more than the appraisal. We'll do what the appraisal is." If this is, and I believe it is, in fact, a building lot on Fairfield Beach Road, it's worth more than $400,000 if you could put a house on it. So I think they've been very fair, and I would recommend that we go through with the purchase. I think the alternative is not gonna be good for the town, quite frankly.
Thank you. Any further, any further comments in the public? All right, seeing none, back to the board. Any further comments, discussion from the board?
Just a couple of thoughts. I like the piece of land, and I like acquiring it for the town. I think it makes sense for a lot of the same reasons that I lead conservation and zoning and the administration want to, want to purchase the piece of land, so I certainly support that. We've gotta figure the financing out, there's some work to be done there, whether we do it today or down the road with Board of Finance. A couple of thoughts come to mind. You know, you mentioned that there's a lot of students down there, right? And I think there's students on either side, or is it just the one side? But, and that's not as important as my thought, I think. Maybe it provides us with an opportunity to do a partnership with the university. You know, maybe we can have the piece of land, but maybe we can find a way to involve the local students that live down there, to take some, to take some ownership, to take some care of the land, work with us, and make it part of their neighborhood. You know, if we can empower them to be part of our neighborhood, maybe we can convince them to work with us so that instead of the piece of property ending up with junk and garbage and cans on it, it's the exact opposite of that, and it would benefit the entire neighborhood. Or maybe there's another organization. I know there's a brand-new Young Burgers Club that just got formed, and there are some members that live down in that area. Maybe we can partner with some group like that, or some other organization in town that could assist both getting it clean, but keeping it clean, and keeping it beautiful, and making the access something for us to be proud of going forward from a conservation perspective. So I think there's some opportunities there for us to do something good, not just today, but in the future with this piece of land that Mr. Stanky is very much in favor of purchasing, so just a couple of random thoughts.
In terms of the financing, you said there's some questions there?
Well, I know we've...
The obvious ones included.
We have an either-or kind of proposal for us. I was just referring to how we, how we discussed that, which we really haven't.
All right, the steps are for today, if this board chooses, because we have one part of the approval.
Right.
We can approve the resolution the way it stands, in which case, two things would happen. The main resolution would go forward to Board of Finance.
Yeah.
But we would also then reach out to conservation at their next meeting to get their consideration of whether they choose to use the H. Smith Richardson grant fund for this. If they say no to that, then basically it would go forward with only the bonding option for acquiring the property. If they say yes to it, theoretically, the Board of Finance could also then reject the use of the grant fund. Or reject the use of the bonding too. I mean, the Board of Finance could vote the whole thing down, or vote down just the use of the grant fund. Then it would get to the RTM, and they could vote it down, or let go through it. They wouldn't be able to reject the use of the grant fund individually, but the Board of Finance could have at that point, they'd have the Conservation Commission decision, and they could then modify this agreement to either include just the use of the grant fund, so when it goes to the RTM, it might say only the grant fund, but the bonding resolution could have been taken off the table at that point.
Just so there's no misunderstanding, you do understand that you have the option of saying here today, "We don't want to use the trust fund, just bond it." You have that option, or you could say, "We want to pay for half of that out of the trust fund." You're just the beginning in this, in this process, and it'll go, it'll go on from there. But you could say, "Don't use the trust fund, bond the whole thing."
Or we could, we basically could modify this and reject, and remove the bonding option.
Yes.
So we can rewrite this as we need to.
That was my point, we just got to that, yeah.
Well, we're...
We're at that point. So, well, thank you for the explanation. So the way it's written, the force is, it would leave here as written, which is... Under what condition, and this kind of goes back to the conversation we had a couple weeks ago off the charter here, under what conditions would it come back to this board? Would it not?
I think if you didn't, if you didn't give a conditional approval, then it might have to come back to the board depending on what happened. That's why you're gonna, you're gonna give your approval. Let's say that you say, "We approve the purchase of this for the $275,000. We approve the use of $275,000 from the trust fund, and we also approve that if, that if the other boards don't appropriate all that money, that we approve the balance to be bonded." Then it'll just move down the line, and whatever they do, it doesn't have to come back to you. Because you've already given that approval.
Right. It doesn't trip that material change item that we talked about?
Right. Because you're dealing with it now.
Got it. Okay, thank you.
Any questions?
I don't have any questions, I have a comment. I think we have a unique opportunity.
You might want to speak up a bit with the mic.
Oh, I keep covering the mic, I apologize. I just wanted to take the opportunity to make a comment, which is that I think the town has a unique opportunity to purchase this land for preservation and also for conservation. And we could say, "Let's get the tax revenue, let's offer this as a buildable lot," but we all know you never get opportunities to get land. I mean, land is finite, and I think we need to seize this opportunity for the present and future benefit of the citizens of this town. So I do support this purchase, and I think it's a terrific opportunity, and I'm pleased that the owners, the other owners, are giving us this opportunity, and I think we should seize it.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think through, I mean, we typically don't have things leave this board with two options attached to them. I think we run the risk of losing a little control over the subsequent financing of this project. But I know we've got good people on conservation who are gonna look at it with a keen eye, and look at their fund with a keen eye, and make an important decision there. And then we have other town bodies that will opine as well.
Clarify one point.
Mr. Gump?
Yes.
The H. Smith Richardson Trust has two trustees.
Okay.
One of which is the Bank of New York, the other of which is the Board of Selectment. So if the money's gonna be used, it's you folks that decide that it's gonna be used. You actually have to, I think after we say it's a good idea and we recommend it, then you folks as the trustee have to, as the co-trustee have to say, "We're gonna use the money for this," and authorize the money to be spent.
Okay, so it might come back to us.
Can we get clarity? From the mic, please. I'm just trying to get clarity on your side.
I don't want to disagree with my colleague. I'm not sure that the order matters. I think it's very clear that you are a co-trustee. The bank is a co-trustee, but they don't have any say in how the money's spent. It's you folks and the Conservation Commission, and if it's principal that's being spent, the Board of Finance, according to the terms of the trust. So if you say, "We're gonna authorize $150,000 out of the, out of the trust," that's all that they can approve. If you say, "We'll authorize the full 275," then they have the option of saying, "We'll go along with that, or we're gonna go with less." I think, you know what, I think it might have to come back under those circumstances if you have a disagreement.
That's what I was asking before, I wasn't sure about that.
Because the two of you have to agree.
All right, can I, can I?
We could.
Mr. Lester, if you could. What was the original amount that went into this trust?
40,000?
40,000 dollars.
Is that, is that what we are calling the principal?
Well, that's a good question. I think...
Thank you.
We just, we just discussed that.
Good job.
Do you have a good answer?
Well, we get one. That's, that's, that's another good question. I think you have income that wasn't spent, it then probably becomes principal, it gets added to the principal, it becomes principal. I don't know, I don't know how the accounting works, I don't know how they would see that. If it's not principal, the only difference would be, if it's deemed to be income, then it doesn't have to go to the Board of Finance. It's still this board and Conservation that makes the decision. If you disagree, though, it's probably, if they don't vote the same way you do, like, let's say you authorize the full amount, and they don't authorize it, it's probably gonna have to come back for your approval, although maybe not. I guess, I guess if they wanted to spend less than you voted, it probably wouldn't have to come back, because you've authorized more.
Can I, can I ask, can we do some with, some from the trust and some with bonding? Can we...
Yeah, I think you can. That's what the resolution is designed to do.
Okay, so I just, we don't know the amount.
Well, we can pick it, I mean, when you say we don't know the amount.
Well, the 40,000, I mean, is that an unknown? Are we taking the 40,000 for the principal? I don't know the amount.
It's the risk of...
You think it's 400,000?
Mr. Gump just informed me that there are some records in the probate court that would bear on that question of principal versus interest. Okay, so we could determine that, but again, it's only gonna, the only difference would be, if it's deemed to be interest, it wouldn't have to go to the Board of Finance. It's still your jurisdiction, it's still your decision to spend it.
It would, yeah, my initial thought, looking at some other similar transactions, would be the principal would be the 40,000, everything else would be compounded interest over time.
But some trusts say that any unexpended interest is added to the principal.
Mr. Stanky, perchance in your prior career, did you investigate this question off?
I looked into it.
Could you come up and...
Make it look up.
Well, welcome back.
You know, I should have known better than to suggest there's a question. Mr. Stanky had not looked into.
Tom Stanky, I believe, as Mr. Gump indicated, the original $50,000 grant ran out during First Selectman Darrell's administration. And we, it was going to revert to the town, I believe, General Fund, and we had to contact the RTM members going back, and the family, the Richardson family, to determine their intention when they accepted the gift. And it was for a, in essence, a perpetual grant trust. And I believe, I think 115,000 when the First Selectman Darrell, when the town, the RTM, reestablished, if you will, that, so you're looking, I think, the principal, not 40,000, but I believe it's approximately 100,000, and the interest has accrued since that time. Was last used approximately 10 years ago to acquire the open space island in Great Island Marsh in Ash Creek, and then reimbursed by the Aspartic Land Trust for their half. So you're looking at, I'd say approximately one-quarter of the existing account would be the principal and the remainder interest.
By rough math, $400,000 minus $275,000 to purchase this, that would leave 125,000 would be roughly the amount of principal left.
You'd wanna sharpen your pencil, be sure you're on it right, but I believe that's correct.
Okay. All right, subject to verification. So the question is, what's principal? All right, so getting back to the board, do we have, why don't we start from the macro sense, are we okay with the way the resolution is worded? Or are we looking at making a stronger statement or limitation as to what would be used from the trust, or perhaps how much might be bonded?
Okay, well, I mean, that's, that's a tough question. Because, I mean, on one hand, I don't want to appear to be draconian with the commission, or whoever has to say over this $400,000 that's been sitting there for a long time, and, you know, force them to do something with it that, that they may choose that, they may think something else is a better idea or a better purchase. And on the other hand, I don't want to bond money unnecessarily, so I'm a little nervous sending something here, sending something away from our board that's not crystal clear, right? That's vague or has too many opportunities or options to it. And there's no mathematical formula that I can think of unless we decide to split it, but there's, I don't know what the rationale behind that would be besides we're just taking the number and cutting it in half. But I'm certainly open to the conversation. I'd like to buy the piece of land, and I'd like to move this forward and find a way that's comfortable for us to do that.
If we just pass the resolution, it goes forward, your questions get answered by the Conservation Commission when they meet in terms of how much they want to use out of the trust fund, and maybe none? And then it goes to the Board of Finance, and they can kind of revise the wording to reflect that.
What do you think, Sheila?
I think that's the way to go.
Ma'am?
I do. Because we'll have more, the other boards will have more information than we do now.
Yep, I'm gonna ask the folks in back to have one conversation, please, and it be up here in the front of the room, because it's distracting to the discussion up here to have that constant talking. You are welcome to leave the room and continue your conversation out there.
Because this is kind of a conditional resolution, I'm gonna ask you a question, and you don't have to answer it. My question is, if the Conservation Commission and/or the Board of Finance said, "We do not want to expend any of the money out of the trust," would you be amenable to bonding the whole amount? If that's the case, then you can pass it on with that caveat, and, but I think you're the first ones that have to decide this, or you could say, "Look, we want to wait and see what they have to say too." I mean, you could do that too. I mean, we're not talking a long period of time. So, because you do have to do this, the trust does provide that you do this in conjunction with the Conservation Commission.
Okay, and just to help with that, if I can, from my standpoint, if we can buy all this using the trust fund, I'd be in favor of that. Having less bonding is generally a good thing. We've spent X amount of years, we haven't really used this money, it's been sitting there. I'm a fan of using it and getting the benefit of it for the town rather than not. And especially since it does help our open space management and take care of our marshes, and we've just had some recent experience where that would be helpful. On the other hand, if the Conservation Commission felt, when they look at their priorities, that there were other priorities out there that they wanted to save this for, if there were some unknown concerns they had, that they just didn't want to be without this money, and I would hope that going forward, they remember we have this money, so we can actually address those concerns. But then I'd be in favor of bonding, because I think it's, I buy the rationales that I've heard from Mr. Stanky, Mr. Jones, about how this is important to our conservation efforts. And again, we've just had so much recent experience, and I think that's good, and I think to the extent, if we can, for a couple of hundred thousand dollars, we'll get the open space and free up one less house in the beach area, in a flood zone, I think that's a worthwhile trade-off. It may not be the financial trade-off, as was mentioned earlier, you can always get more tax dollars in, but I think that somewhere we have to bite the bullet and realize that less building in a flood zone is a good thing. And there's no way that if we do less building in a flood zone, we're gonna make the same amount of money. There's a cost to that, and that is having less tax income coming in. So people can disagree with that, but I think at some point, that's where I'd probably come down on this.
Approval of the resolution that's before you accomplishes your, what the goals you just stated, so.
Okay.
If you're, if you're not comfortable with bonding, if they don't pay it, then you have to change things. But what Mr. Tetra said, that's what the entire resolution will accomplish. If they, if they approve less, you'll bond some of it. If they approve none, you'll bond all of it. If they approve it all, there'll be no bonding, and you won't have to come back for that.
Thank you for that clarification, and I agree with the commentary that Mr. Tetra just made, and with those explanations, I'm happy to support this going forward in its current form, but I would like to emphasize the one point that you did make, even though it's non-binding, the personal caveat that, you know, I think choice one in a perfect world would be to use more of the fund money and bond less, if that is a reasonable comment to make.
The issue is, we don't invest, we can't invest the money
Right.
in any, you know, investment instrument that would get us fair market rates that the rest of the world is getting, so that consequently, we're never gonna make enough. So that consequently, we're never gonna make enough. So, the fact that we can buy a whole piece of property now with that fund, I think, provides the highest and best use of that money, in my mind. I don't, so that's, and then I think to the concerns that you raised earlier, which I also agree with, which is, you know, we get to revisit this after the Conservation Commission does their thing, the Board of Finance becomes that checkpoint. And certainly, we can speak with the Board of Finance at their meetings as we're all ex official members of that body and relate our thoughts and concerns. They can discuss it at that point. But I think then they will have the missing piece of information, which is just what the Conservation Commission does. The reason for not postponing this, letting the Conservation back, is we're at that point in the year where things get bumped out. And in July and August, we start having different meeting schedules. So, by approving it, we go up to the next step. If the Board of Finance or the RTM wanted a bump in a month because they wanted to consider more things, they would have that opportunity. If they don't, in July, we miss an RTM meeting. And I believe we miss a Board of Finance meeting. I think both of them come back, or we have one but not the other. So, it could be till September before we get both boards having a chance to pass on this. And that's what I was trying to avoid doing. So, by passing it, we do have the one conservation question open as to what they want to do with the fund, but that could get picked up at the Board of Finance meeting and it gets to the RTM before summer recess, for lack of a better term.
I can agree with that. And the other, the last point I'd like to make is I would like to find a way to find some type of partnership with the neighborhood or the school or a club or the Audubon or the Earth Day. There's gotta be an opportunity there for us to do something with somebody to take invested interest in this piece of land and keep it, make it beautiful and keep it beautiful. So.
I think that, I think that's a good suggestion for the Conservation Commission. Also, having just met with a group of the students, they are getting more active and more organized down there. They formed a group called Beach Residents Advocacy Group. It's, this is year two. One of the initiatives that's come out of there is moving clam jam. We'll have a chance to see how that works. Please, everybody keep your fingers crossed. But I think that they are becoming more of an organized group that can deal with things. So, I think that creates an opportunity, better than we've had in the past, to have somebody to deal with it, to promote, your thoughts.
Thank you.
And Mr. Jones, if you need help getting in touch with that group, let me know and we can kind of work together.
Sure, there is.
Yeah. All right. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. It passes. Thank you.
So, we'll, we'll have this go to Conservation and then I think after that to Board of Finance or shortly thereafter.
Well, yeah, we need to clear up the principal issue and get a firm answer on the principal question. How much is principal? How much is?
We'll get that before then.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Item nine, six o'clock.
Good discussion.
All right, so we are up to item 10. I would entertain a motion to skip the reading of the item.
Come on.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Simply put, a brief summary of the item is that this is concerning a grant of three million dollars, of which there's a 25% matching part on behalf of the town. So, that would be, as we can see in the item seven hundred and seventy-two thousand dollars. This grant has the express purpose of to create a berm or barrier that would protect the water pollution control facility as well as the animal shelter, conservation garage, and new fire training center. We have our 12-pointers. Is somebody here? Mr. Michelangelo, would you just step us through this?
Yes, and we have some drawings, too, if that helps illustrate it. Or if you want me to just go through the narrative, that's fine.
Some drawings might be helpful for the group.
Why don't we set it up right over here?
And what I'd suggest is, I know there's some question as to whether we want to consider this fully tonight or, because we've had a lot of information come at this board recently about this. But I would suggest that if it's okay with my colleagues, that we let go through a brief presentation.
Sure.
And then if we want to go further into it, we do. If not, I would suggest we postpone it sooner rather than later so that we don't take any more time here than necessary.
That's fine.
And we'll have to come back to this later.
This is one of the projects that came about as a result of Storm Sandy. One of the problems of Storm Sandy was that our wastewater plant, even though Storm Sandy wasn't a hundred-year flood, our plant was isolated. So, not all the areas got flooded, but basically the whole area around it was flooded. So, on that Monday, it was a difficult job for the, for the workers to evacuate the site during the storm. And then conversely, it was a difficult job for them to get back the next day because it was basically, you know, surrounded by waters all around. Very difficult to pump and maintain the facility to treat the water going through. So, a couple of things that after Storm Sandy, a couple of things we started looking into in conjunction with the DEP is both getting this facility off the grid and protecting it, which are sort of linked to the next project. So, we went ahead with that with various options with both DEP. But it turned out that this grant, which is a community development block grant, which we typically think of as a housing-type grant, but in all the Sandy-related projects, as you'll see with all these items, this has been our most successful grant opportunity in getting funding from the state and federal levels. So, what this project does is isolate the plant. So, the whole plant is in a 100-year flood zone. I have a map later on which shows it. But basically, the entire plant is a 100-year flood zone. And this isolates the plant, builds a barrier to the flood elevation around it so that floodwaters do not enter our facility. In most areas, it's able to be done by a berm along something like this. In the tighter areas, like behind the new fire training center, it'll be a vertical-type wall. Both, this is Richard White Way, one-rod highway that comes in from Reef Road, makes the turn over there. We have the majority of the plant on this side. Partially, we also have some of the wastewater treatment plant on this side. This is where the fire training center is, conservation garage, and animal control shelter. So, just by nature of tying into high ground, it encompasses those three facilities, too, which is not a bad idea. And we tie it to high ground right about here where Green Cycle is. The wall, the barrier goes to approximately, hasn't been final designed yet, but approximately elevation sixteen. And the way we accomplish overcoming that, when we're coming down one-rod highway, we start building up the road, a couple hundred feet up, and then we get to the top, crest, and then we come down. And similarly, when we get around the corner, we'd also ramp up and go down. So, there's enough room where we could do this conceptual design, but we've done quite a bit of detail on it. Confident it'll work that, that we create an island there that'll stay dry. So, the only penetrations to this island is the sewage coming in and the sewage coming out. All of those have mechanical-type structures, controllable structures. So, we're able to stop the water that's coming in both from the pipes and from the sea.
Since the map is up there, would you just point out where, how much of that was underwater during Storm Sandy?
It, it came to the fringes of just about all of these facilities there. So, it didn't get, didn't get to the bulk of the facility because they sit a little higher. But it was all around the outsides of all the buildings.
How about the other side of the road, the four, three circles and a square?
Correct. That, once again, that was, that was up to that entire level also. And one of the things that we...
You say up to that entire level. Was that underwater?
Correct, yeah. It was, the, the tankage sits probably around maybe five or six feet high. And it was probably about, probably about halfway up of those, that tankage.
Wow.
And just the, so the, the 100-year flood zone from the site, once again, so this is the property over there. This is the same picture. So, this is the main site. This is the tanks across the street. This is all on the 100-year flood plain. The only area down there that's not, you'll see the bus yard, the Green Cycle site sits up high, the old landfill site sits up high. But everything down here is in the 100-year flood plain, with the exception of just this area over there.
Thank you. I'm sorry, didn't mean to interrupt.
Okay. And just the, the complement to this, obviously, once you create a bathtub there, you are subject to rainwater flooding there. So, there is a stormwater pumping system to evacuate any water that's trapped there. And in writing the bond, in writing the resolution there, and I've seen it written, too, I think in the formal resolution, we called it, we typically called it a hardening project. I believe in the resolution, it's written also as a berm and pump station, just different terms, it's interchangeable. But that's based to the extent of this project. And once again, we, we feel it's a good project. In talking with the state DEP, you know, we feel we are gonna be a leader. This is the future of wastewater treatment plants along the shoreline of Long Island Sound.
I know a lot of information came out of this rather late in the last day or so. There was some question as to whether we wanted more time to take a look at that. And I know there was an email that went out today, in fact, that included information relating to this. Did we want to go further at this point or did we want to postpone it to our next meeting? There, there is no critical date on this, correct?
Yeah, a month. The next meeting will not adversely affect our project schedules.
Our next meeting would be May 6th, so that'd be the first week in May. That's fine.
Yeah, I have not had a time, time to read the email. I do have questions and, but we can postpone those for a month.
Well, actually, I postponed it for about two weeks.
Two weeks. That's, that's fine.
The month would be created based on where else this has to go. But my concern is making sure that we, as a board, have time to review this.
Yeah.
And there's a lot here for this project. And it's a very important project for the town.
Yeah.
Just quickly, on schedules, Jen, do you off the top of your head what we did with our May meeting? I know we moved the May 20th to another date.
Yes.
But I don't know if we moved it up or back. We moved it back to the 27th?
Yes.
So, the May 20th is not gonna happen?
Correct. I may not have informed the [inaudible]. It's okay. But that's correct.
Okay, that's what I had.
We just need to make sure that's also properly reflected on our calendars as soon as, as soon as possible.
So, we're looking at the 6th versus the 27th? So, it's, it's the 6th is the answer. Okay.
But actually, the 20th, because we had to get it to the Board of Finance, the 27th could work because that would still get to the June Board of Finance meeting.
Oh, okay.
So, we have either, it's okay. So, we're not boxing ourselves out from that standpoint.
Good.
However, sooner rather than later so we get approval of this.
Yes, so I'm happy to postpone this because it's 6th.
Is that a motion?
I'm going to postpone. I intend to add a date certain, that date being May 6th.
Second.
Any discussion from the board? Any comments from the public on the postponement and the postponement only? All right. Back to the board, are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you. I would suggest, because this is tied in with the microgrid, which is item 11, that in fact, we look at postponing that one, too, so we kind of deal with these at the same meeting, if that was acceptable of the board?
Fine. Again, if timing is...
Mr. Michelangelo, is there anything about item 11 that you would want to step us through so we can consider that as we?
Yes, I'll give you some background so you have some history so you're better, better informed for the next meeting. One of the things about, the wastewater treatment plant is capable of running on generators. Basically, the full load is able to be handled. One of the issues of that, the generators are diesel generators. So, in the case of Sandy, we were literally getting deliveries from Santa Fuel, getting pickup trucks with 250 gallons of diesel in them, feeding them. They only last about two days. So, one of the principles also in the wastewater industry and other critical facilities is establishing a facility that could run off the grid. So, the idea of this microgrid project, similarly what we did at the compound for the police station, fire headquarters, and Operation Hope, is to be able to power everything down there on natural gas, which is the most reliable fuel source used by DEP for these type operations, for approximately a 30-day span. So, if we do run off, if we do go off electricity, if power goes down, we'd be able to run this facility off of natural gas for 30 days. It'll be interconnected also to the other sites like fire training, animal control, and the conservation garage. They like to see some symmetry between these, symbiosis between these projects. So, it was a project that's, this was even envisioned when we went for the application at the police station. And the reason it was not approved at that time, they thought it was a great project, the reason it was not approved at that time was because of the lack of hardening issue. So, this marries those two issues very well. And this one is 100% funded by the grant.
Yeah. Joe, if I can just restate that? The issue is, the state will not fund a microgrid project in a flood zone. By doing the hardening, we're gonna have to take this out of the flood zone. And because they are very supportive of doing it, both the town and [inaudible] as well as doing a microgrid project in this area, they are willing to take it on as a state project. So, in essence, the state is providing the 25% matching grant that would normally be the local share.
So, it's a model for other towns, really?
Yep. And we benefit from that. And they realize that we're putting the hardening in as part of our contribution, too. So, it's a good partnership in that. Joe, could you just be absolutely clear with us? How long was the station off the ground, out of power? Right? And did we, you know, how did we get, because it was flooded in, how did we get the extra fuel in there during that? So, how many days did it run off generator? How did we get the fuel in? When did, when was power restored?
We, we, because of the delicate, delicate equipment down there, we purposely took it off power midday on Monday, the 29th, and started running off generators. So, it won't be subject to any of the shock waves that the VHDs have, that the drives have. So, we purposely took it off on, on Monday afternoon. And we were able to get trucks in there, large trucks that sit up high. So, it was able to, it runs, able to run probably about 36 hours before you start getting to the lower type fuel. And the way we were accessing fuel down there, we'd come through the back, through Vera Street, the Public Works Garage, and we, we'd work our way down this way over here. But still, the trucks were working, the trucks, even after 36 hours, which was probably early morning Wednesday, the Santa Fuel trucks were driving through, you know, 12, 18 inches of water. So, you know, it was a, not the way you want to run this facility. And the fact that because the, a lot of the stuff was underwater, we were, we were treating the waste, but we weren't treating it anywhere near the quality that we would on a day like today or tomorrow or whatever.
Now, that's because those tanks were underwater on the south side you talked about?
Well, a large part of it was because of the, the floodwaters coming in from the, from the whole neighborhood. The plant could only process 25 million gallons per day, and we were getting in excess of that.
Because that's the intrusion part into the pipeline. So, that has nothing to do with the berm being put up. That has to do with the pipes that were bringing the water in along with the sewage.
Yeah, but there was a combination of the surface water also. So, it was, it was coming, it was coming, discharging from the pipe and also through the, through the facility itself. And once again, you know, these, a tank like this that you see, it's similar to, to, to our basements, instead of being eight feet down, a lot of these tanks go down 25 feet. So, they're, they're difficult to keep watertight when you have standing water right up against them.
Right. But that, just because it gets in the basement, doesn't actually get into the pipes. the pipes where it's being treated, does it?
Some of it does, yeah. There is, there was some intrusion, both on-site and through the network.
Any further questions on the microgrid at this point?
No, not right now. Thank you.
All right. Then may I have a motion to accept or postpone rather, sorry?
I move to postpone item 11 to adjourn certain that date being May 6th, 2015.
A second?
Second.
All right. Any further discussion on the board? Any comments from the public on the postponement, the postponement only, please? Seeing none, back to the board, are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Jen, that's a second one we have postponed. All right. Next up is item 12. To here, consider an act upon the following resol- resolution as recommended by the Director of Public Works, whereas federal monies are under, are available under the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program, and whereas pursuant to Chapter 127(c) and Part 6 of Chapter 130 of the Connecticut General Statutes, the Commissioner of Housing is authorized to disburse such federal monies to local municipalities, and whereas it is desirable and in the public interest that the Town of Fairfield accept this, from the state a grant in a sum not to exceed $560,000 in order to undertake a Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Tranche 1 Project, Pine Creek Culvert Upgrade, and to execute an assistance agreement, therefore should one be offered. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Town of Fairfield is cognizant of the conditions and prerequisites of state assistance imposed by Part 6 of the Chapter 130 of the Connecticut General Statutes, and that acceptance by the Town of Fairfield of a disaster recovery community block grant to be used for Pine Creek Culvert Upgrade in an amount not to exceed $560,000 is hereby approved, and further resolved that the First Selectment is hereby authorized on behalf of the Town of Fairfield to accept and expend said grant, and further resolved that the First Selectment is hereby authorized on behalf of the Town of Fairfield to execute any and all necessary documents to secure a grant. I have a motion to accept.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Mr. Michelangelo, will you fill us in, please?
Yes, and I'll use this overall map to orientate us, so. So once again, this is our wastewater treatment plant here, Richard White Way, 111 Highway. This is the channel of Pine Creek, and this is the Fairfield Beach Road Peninsula. So what this does, the way the system works now, I've often talked about how our marsh system is, been in place for 50 years, it works as good as any community I've ever seen. So what happens twice a day is when, during our high tides, Long Island Sound swells, Pine Creek swells, the salt water runs up the creek, and it goes through this hump tide gate, and it goes to the areas of Reef Road, Lally, and Penfield, and it feeds those marshes with salt water twice a day, so those are living, active, viable marshes, and that's a great system. A lot of towns have cut off their saltwater marshes years ago because they didn't like the salt water in their backyards and stuff. That has proven to be unsuccessful. This is a great system that works, it preserves our saltwater marshes. Tom will tell you the benefits better than I will, but it works great. 364 and a half days a year. The one part when it doesn't hurt, like I said, that's our way in and our way out, and that's regulated by 148-inch pipe over here with a flapper-type self-regulated tide gate. System works perfectly except during an event like Storm Sandy, when Long Island Sound comes into our neighborhood, and we have a saltwater lake in all our neighborhoods. In that case, there's only basically one way out, either through the South Benson Marina side of town, or on the Pine Creek side of town. So this was the case where our major strategic point during Storm Sandy, where we located the majority of our pumps getting in over that hump gate. So even though that tide gate, hump gate there works perfect for 50 years, and like I said, all but a half a dozen times during those 50 years, it limits us during storms when Fairfield is inundated. So what this proposal will do is instead of having 148-inch pipe there, put multiple pipes there and quadruple the size of the outlet there. So we'll have the capacity during a storm, so when it does jump our barrier beaches, when it does inundate our neighborhoods, we'd able, able to open those up at the, not just the lowest tide, but pretty much anything but the high tide, and evacuate the water as soon as possible. I think we calculated it, if it was sandy, we would have been able to evacuate it 24 hours or 30 hours, under 30 hours, just by gravity, opening up the pipes, letting everything flow. So this is a great feature access that would serve us well in the future.
How many hours did it take to take the water out after Sandy? How many days?
Basically, it took till that Saturday, even five days later, there were pockets of water even that Saturday. And once again, that was through mechanical pumping. And one of the issues with that, you had, we had to chase the water back, it didn't always come to us, so.
Well, and this is significantly more, it's two 48-inch pipes instead of 148-inch pipe, and two 60-inch pipes, so...
Correct.
Four pipes as big or bigger than what we have now.
Correct, yeah.
So you could roughly take that five days and reduce it by 75% if it takes some time?
And once again, the only, the only, the diminishing factor is just the level of the tide in Long Island Sound. So regardless, we're married to that, so that's why, and that's why we can't, you know, we'd still, we, it's not continuous drain, you drain for a while, you close them, you drain for a while, you close them, you're dependent on the, you can't do it at the, at the high tides.
Right. Any further questions?
No, this is 100% funded.
Correct.
Through the State of Connecticut grant.
Yes.
Great.
Mr. Quayle, what's the construction timeframe to put this in place?
We've done a lot of the environmental legwork permitting. The limit on all these projects, they want them done within two years, and they're basically giving us a, and this is not carved in stone, but basically a June 2015 to a June 2017 timeframe. And this one here, this one, we have the most advanced engineering of the other ones. So, you know, we have a couple, we have some pretty detailed engineering drawings over here, which, you know, these aren't too far from a bid set to go forward. So this, this is our most advanced one that we could go forward with fairly, fairly quickly. I think the permitting on this is the only critical factor, lead item.
Sheila?
No.
All right. You know, I like the fact that once we get this installed, they just work. I mean, it's, there's no long ramp-up period, there's no long, that type of thing, it just, and this is a, I think, an important adjunct to an improvement over where we are now. There were a number of questions about the floodgates during Storm Sandy and the time after Storm Sandy, and I think this is a major step forward on that. Any further questions from the board? Any questions, or, excuse me, any comments from the public? All right, back to the board, any further discussion? Joe, any final comment?
Nope.
Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Joe. I think you've got another one here, and there are 14-point items in your pack in your backup too, please.
Yep.
So, next up, item 13, also from the Director of Public Works, also requiring Board of Finance and RTM approval. To here, consider an act upon the following resolution, whereas federal monies are available under the Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Program administered by the state, and whereas pursuant to Chapter 127(c) and Part 6 of Chapter 130 of the Connecticut General Statutes, the Commissioner of Housing is authorized to disburse such federal monies to local municipalities, and where it is, it is desirable and in the public interest that the Town of Fairfield accept the state grant in a sum not to exceed $500,000 in order to undertake a Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Tranche 1 Project, repair of Penfield Pavilion, and to execute an assistance agreement, therefore should one be offered. Now, therefore, be it resolved, the Town of Fairfield is cognizant of the conditions and prerequisites of state assistance imposed by Part 6 of Chapter 130 of the Connecticut General Statutes, and that the acceptance of the Town of Fairfield of the Disaster Recovery Community Block Grant be used to repair, for the repair at Penfield Pavilion in an amount not to exceed $500,000 is hereby approved, and further resolved, the First Selectment is hereby authorized on behalf of the Town of Fairfield to execute any and all necessary documents to secure said grant. I have a motion to accept.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Want to point out that during our recent Penfield Pavilion review and evaluation and of the project and approval by the hall boards and RTM, this was the $500,000 grant we were talking about as part of that. So it has been approved to expend this because it's part of the project. So what we're doing is, in essence, approving the acceptance of the grant on behalf of the town. So we're not changing the amount we're spending anywhere, we're literally just accepting the grant formally. We talked about it before, we didn't formally accept it until the project was approved. Joe, if you could just...
Okay. And once again, this is for the facility itself, for the building, so it literally comes off the money that we anticipate spending for the building. And just a point, you know, statewide, it was in Tranche 1, which is the first section of this HUD money, there was only about $2 million statewide that was available for public facilities. So we got roughly 25% of the money that was available statewide, there was a small pocket of money available. So there's always the, there's always the, when you're writing these grants, there's always the dilemma of how much do you request? Well, based on that amount and a couple other factors, and I'll just expand on that, you know, even, these are the grants we got, we applied for much more than these. So you're not always guaranteed these things, so you have to, you have to write them, basically, to give yourself the best shot of getting the award.
When you got 25% of the money that was available statewide, Joe, I think you did a great job on writing a grant.
Very impressive.
So thank you for that.
Laura Pooley wrote all these grants and other ones.
Any, we've gone over Penfield just a little bit in the last year. Any questions on, basically, the project, the project, we've been through that backwards and forwards, we're literally just using, approving a source of revenue or grant to come in and to do what we've already approved of.
But it's specifically for the foundation, is that correct, Joe?
It's for the building.
It's for the building. It says to construct a new foundation system, but it's the entire building.
All right. Any further questions here? I mean, any comments from the public? If you would, please come up to the mic and introduce yourself, and again, I would remind you that it's public comment only, please.
My, I'm Mary T. Troop, and I live on 86 Fairfield Beach Road. My question about this project is I'm curious why the bulkhead is described in this plan that was presented to you.
Yeah. Ma'am, this is comments on this grant specifically.
Right. And this is about it. My question is on the height of it, the FEMA height at that part of the beach, my understanding...
Okay, ma'am, this is not about the bulkhead, this is about the building.
Okay, I misunderstood what the question was.
I think you're, or grant early, I think we're going to come to the grant you're talking about. This is item 13.
Excuse me.
It's on our agenda.
I'm so sorry.
Not a problem.
Okay.
Not a problem. But I just, as a reminder, we're not doing a Q and A, you're welcome to ask that, but... All right. Any other comments from the public? Back to the board, any further comments here? Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Joe, thank you, and I think you're up there again for item 14. To here, consider an act upon the following resolution as recommended by the Director of Public Works, whereas federal monies are available under the Community Development Block Grant Program, can I have a motion to...
A wave reading?
Yes, please.
A motion to wave reading.
A second?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Can I have a motion to put this before us?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
All right. And I would just point out, just to be clear, that this grant was specifically applied for, through the Community Development Block Grant Program, to be used for the shoreline resiliency improvements at Penfield Beach in an amount not to exceed $225,000 is hereby approved. So that's what we're, that's what's before us now. Mr. Michelangelo, if you will take us through what this is about.
Yes. So when the second round of Community Development Block Grant money came around, there was zero money for public facilities. So one of the things we looked at at this project, but there was money for other type stuff. So one of the things we did with this project, the Penfield project, is we wrote a grant which reads shoreline resiliency improvements at Penfield Beach. So instead of the building, it's site work, because we did have to do some site work there too. So we wrote this grant, as many of you know, there is that wooden bulkhead wall that runs along that, and this grant was done in conjunction with the plans that we're developing there, so we weren't inventing a project, we weren't developing something that wasn't consistent with the Penfield Building Commission and their designer were proposing, and this is actually the designer's thing. So we have our existing bulkhead wall, wooden bulkhead wall, which varies in height, but it's somewhere around 11 to 11.5 as far as the height. So the way the design is for the new site work there is to fortify that bulkhead in the front with larger type stone and put some sand material over it to elevation 12, and also tie it in at the end, basically, both where the horse trail is, and on the other side to tie it into the wall. So that does a couple things, not only you're gaining about a foot in height, you're beefing this up with stone, so it's not as vulnerable, and by making it a angled surface as opposed to a straight vertical surface, it's less susceptible to scour. So this has a tremendous amount of benefits. It does go to elevation 12, which is not the flood zone, floodwaters could go over this at that time, and this, this will cover approximately from a, I think we figured, you know, they, the flood zones, they go in even number of years, so by statistically, this will cover a 10 to 25-year event before it gets to that height. But once again, this is consistent with what the Penfield Building Commission visions for this site.
Let me clarify, the item before us is to accept a grant for $225,000.
Correct.
There's nothing in this grant that specifies exactly how that money's going to be used.
Well, and I'd say, the award letter is in your packet.
Yep.
So I wouldn't say exactly, but in the general terms of that, in that award letter, and, you know, we wrote the application, so, you know, we will be consistent with the application that we submitted and with the, and with the approval letter. There's some flexibility, we didn't box ourselves into a corner, but basically, the gist of it, as I said, to protect that bulkhead wall.
This is for...
Correct.
Joe, just to clarify, this is for resiliency improvements at Penfield Beach?
Correct.
Conditions include compliance with National Environmental Policy Act, HUD's written approval of release of funds, execution of the assistance agreement, and grant in the amount of 225 may secure upon HUD's approval for release of funds, passage of the appropriate town resolution to accept the funds, which is what we're doing, and executed assistance agreements, which is what we're authorizing. The proposal represents a sound means of retrofitting a vital section of shoreline infrastructure, namely the timber bulkhead at Penfield Beach. We provide section of Fairfield Beach Road neighborhood with coastal resiliency needed in order to mitigate damaging effects, but there's no specs.
I'll correct you.
All right, so there's no height, there's no width, there's no thickness, there's no type of material. Is that correct? This is all about the money.
Correct.
This is not about the project.
Correct.
The details on the project are contained within the Penfield Pavilion design, which has been approved and is a separate project. So all this does is giving us more revenue to build, rebuild Penfield Pavilion as determined by the Penfield Building Committee.
Correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, any questions from the board? Are we okay? Okay to go to the public? Any comments from the public? Did that help?
No.
Okay. That's just not the item before us, I'm sorry. Back to the board, any further discussion? Are we able, ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, Joe. Next.
I move to waive the reading of item 15.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I may have a motion to accept.
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Okay, that item is now before us, and again, just to clarify, this has to do with the acceptance by the Town of Fairfield of a disaster recovery, community development block... of a disaster recovery community development block grant to be used for the WPCF sanitary sewer outfall repair in an amount not to exceed $74,500 and the appropriate paperwork to accept and expend said grant. Joe, if you will take us through that.
Yes. So the wastewater treatment plant, the way it discharges water to Long Island Sound, there is a pipe which runs underground, a thirty inch diameter pipe, which runs from about here and goes out about, about four thousand total feet in length. So it discharges in the middle of the sound about a third of a mile out there. And it's a concrete pipe and sections and joints. And one of the things we noticed shortly after Sandy, well, during Sandy, we're having trouble with pressure getting the pipe out. And one of the things we noticed after Sandy, that there appeared to be a dislodging of the pipe on the south side of Fairfield Beach Road over there. So we went through the right procedures, we did some analysis, we went through DEP. It's underground, ten feet at least over there, difficult soil to access, even getting a test hole to find out what it was was extremely difficult. But we did some engineering, a consultant in there, figured out that the pipe did get dislodged. Somehow, we pointed it to Sandy, that's how we got this grant, and we were able to, we were able to get money to repair that pipe. It's difficult to say if it's separated or dislodged, but it's not as tight as it should be. This will repair the pipe with a collar type system in the ground. It's literally isolated to, you know, a ten foot span where you're doing the work, but because of the nature of it, that's why the cost is seventy-four thousand. And this is a hundred percent funded one also.
So no cost to the town?
Correct.
Any comments or questions from the board? Okay. Any comments from the public? All right, back to the board. Are we ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Joe. Item sixteen, which is the, to here consider and act upon revision to Dwight Roof Building Committee charge. May I have a motion to accept?
So moved.
A second?
Second.
Thank you. This item is now before us. You've got in your packet, a copy that was approved on April first, two thousand and fifteen, and then copied on the back of that, a copy that's been marked up with changes in anticipation of our considering some changes. Mr. Morbeto, did you want to talk to these at all?
Good evening, Sal Morbeto, Manager of Construction Board of Education. Slight error happened with the building committee charge. It left off the, essentially, the paragraph that assigned the building committee work to the special project standing building committee. Last year, this was modeled, after the Mill Hill Roof Building Committee of last year, where it actually went in two steps like we're doing tonight, where the initial charge was brought up, then at a subsequent meeting, the language was added to actually assign that work to the standing building committee. So we, two steps that we could have probably done in one step, it was just a minor error that that paragraph, essentially one paragraph was left off.
Okay, this I see has changes in two areas. In the one, two, three, fourth paragraph down, first sentence is deleted and then the second sentence is added that identifies the special project standing building committee as the group that will undertake this. Is that correct? That's one?
That's one.
And then second, in the next paragraph, fifth paragraph, first sentence is removed, and then there's two sentences added after that. Are those the only changes proposed?
I don't have a copy of the markup. If I can borrow, won't it be your market, but I appreciate that, thank you.
I think the sentence on paragraph five for the board is something we're looking at adding into all building charges going forward. It's what's in the two thousand and seven report that recommends guidelines for building committees, but we're seeing that not every building committee reads that perhaps as thoroughly, and we want to clarify what the, is needed to do to kind of hand off the project formally and to disband so that everybody's clear on what that takes and that it has to come back to the board of selectmen at that point to in fact execute that. So this is something we'll see going forward on building committee charges, and we're just starting it here.
Interesting.
It's not a change in process, it's just duplicating from that report and protocol what we'd like to have happen here.
That would be an outstanding practice.
Okay. So if this is the case, what we need is a motion to amend the charge as identified on this document.
I'll make that motion. I move to accept the changes in the revised draft presented to us for the Dwight School Roof Building Committee under item sixteen.
And I'll second that.
Okay. Any further discussion? I think they're both, from my standpoint, they seem both straightforward, but I've spent a little bit more time with this than you guys have.
Yeah. It's clear.
Is that okay?
Yeah.
It is.
Sal, any further comments from you?
No, the project's moving along fine right now, and hopefully having a nice new roof by the end of the summer.
All right. Any other comments from the public? All right, back to the board. Are we ready to vote?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right. Sal, thank you for your help with that.
Thank you.
All right. And I believe next up is a report from the Chief Fiscal Officer, which my understanding is on his way down.
He's on his way.
Thank you, Tom.
Walking through the room.
Okay.
She has it. If there's a cup, sure.
A second?
Second.
Any amendments?
I'd like to make an amendment to remove the period at the end of the sentence and add a comma followed by $27,459.68.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Of the amendment, all in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
So that's done. All right. Mr. Mayor?
Sir.
Are you here to give us a review of your report?
Well, here's...
For your letter?
Answer questions, but can't give a review of reports, I've never given a report.
All right. Well, if you, actually, to be fair, this is a letter distributed by you out to this board as well as the RTM and Board of Finance to clarify for everybody, so in fact, you did distribute this, so if you could take us, are there any high points or...
Quick high points, yeah.
Unless, at this board, do we want to just ask questions? I'll leave that to the board.
No, I know some high points will be appreciated.
Since we kept them here till seven o'clock.
I have another meeting starting upstairs at seven o'clock.
Okay.
So I've been here nonetheless.
All right.
Anyway, so yes, so summarizing, I guess, the, had a storm, building got knocked down, we applied to, we hired Whit O'Brien as our consultants to help us with the recapturing of the funds necessary to reconstruct, rebuild, replace the building. We have been engaged with FEMA for, what, two years now? Almost three years?
Yeah.
And it's gone back and forth. A few months ago, the town bodies finally came to a decision on what they wanted there. And some administration is very concerned that we make sure that we have captured the proper funds before we building, so Mike directed that we take a more, the first selectman directed that we take a more aggressive approach in attempting to get this thing drawn to a conclusion. So with that direction, we sent letters out to the state reps and the federal reps saying, hey, help us out, let's get this thing started. And, and there's a lady named Amy Lapos from Hyde's office who has taken an aggressive lead in working with us in this case. As a result of those letters, about six weeks ago, on March tenth, there was a conference call held among ourselves, FEMA, Whit O'Brien was aboard, and the State Department, the State, through...
I believe Congressman Himes' office sat in on that, and I believe Senator Murphy's office sat in on that also.
Correct. So I said Amy Lapos is from Senator, Congressman Himes' office taking the odds, and Dana Conover from the State. The State have, through Dana Conover, the State, through Dana Conover, is very, very supportive, in fact, just wrote a great letter for us, prospective dredging request, as he may list request. That call was on March tenth. At that time, we hashed out the differences, and one of the issues, one of the problems has been that Region One, FEMA's divided up into regions, and each region is autonomous, it's kind of like a federation as opposed to a top-down government, and Region One does not have a lot of experience with these big, big storms and large projects. And so they've not seen a lot of this, and they're, they're taking a approach which is not conformity with policies and regs, FEMA policy and regs, and it gets a little complicated. We're doing a software program, this RS means test, et cetera, et cetera. So through this conversation, or as a result of this conversation, FEMA agreed to hire a CES, Cost Estimate Format Specialist. It's called a TAC, Technical Advisory Consultant. To hire a TAC, and then the TAC was going to review our submitted, what we submitted, so what's disputed is whether we satisfy the fifty percent rule. If we satisfy the fifty percent rule, we get money, we can replace, we can rebuild, we can do whatever we want, and the ability to spend is much more flexible and not per sub-project, but for the entire project. So we're trying to be satisfied, we're trying to satisfy the fifty percent rule so we, which will help us to easily build with the full reimbursement that's in the estimates that the, that were reviewed by the town bodies when they approved the six decimal zero to eight million for FEMA to rebuild. They have not hired that TAC yet. So we haven't had, so that we have, we have supplied FEMA with more information. They have, they understand now the RS means tests, which is opposed to, they were just looking for engineering costs, which is not the way these projects work from a FEMA perspective. So we supplied, we have interpreted, we have discussed with them to make sure that they understand it all. Talked to Amy yesterday, no, talked to Amy on Friday, and they told her, Amy on Friday told me that they'd have someone by Thursday, which is tomorrow. So I'll be talking to Amy again tomorrow to see if they have someone. So the plan is, we, as in the State, the Town, and FEMA, have lined up documentation that we've all agreed upon, that needs to be reviewed by this guy, this guy will review it, and he will determine whether or not our calculation, which fully shows that we satisfy the fifty percent rule, we come in like sixty, I forget, sixty-four percent or something. And that's where it's headed. The only other thing to say is that if we don't satisfy the rule, that doesn't mean that we still don't get the money, because then we'd take a different process. This is just the best TAC, the best process to give us the most flexibility in spending the money without a lot of reviewing on us. But there's other avenues which it still allows to satisfy. But we're trying to move it aggressively, because it'd be really great to have a certain, definitive answer before we put our settlement.
Just, I have a question, which is great that we might work this out face to face in a workshop format. If it doesn't work out with the fifty percent rule eligibility, that, you know, considering alternatives from a timing standpoint, where does that leave us? I mean, we don't really, is it unknown what the timing would be?
No, we're not, this is, you know, it's, we're on the track now. We need to get the TAC aboard. Once we get the TAC aboard, what happens if, the fifty percent rule looks at the projects in total, which are one of the advantages, whereas if we leave the fifty percent rule behind, we have to look at every sub-project, if you will.
Okay.
You know, the lockers, the roof, the building, they have, mostly the mitigation issue. What is it mitigation? Is it the elevation? Those issues all be looked at individually as mitigation issues as opposed to repair and replacement issues. We get the fifty percent rule satisfied, then we can do the elevation, we would have to discuss whether or not we're doing elevation. We can do replacement or repair on different parts of the building, we're going to discuss it. We can build a berm or not build a berm, just because it does need a certain amount of money, and as long as it fits into that definition of repair, replace, which is a very broad definition, we can kind of do what we want. Once we, if we have to leave that fifty percent rule, which I don't think we will, but I don't know if FEMA makes the final determination, then we gotta go to FEMA and say, okay, we want to elevate. Mitigation, there's rules that support that they wish to approve that, doesn't mean they necessarily will. So we have the mitigation, the berm, and some other, the mitigation, the elevation, and a couple other mitigation things are the things this would be at risk if we didn't satisfy the fifty percent.
Any questions?
Couple quick ones. What, once again, what's the TAC, what does that stand for?
Technical Assistant Consultant.
Technical Assistant.
Assistance Consultant.
Assistance. Just quickly, you said they're, they're going to be hired hopefully later this week or early next week?
Yeah, it was promised, it's been promised by FEMA.
Okay. How long will that process take? Any estimate?
Well, the idea is this guy comes in, he sits down, he looks at all the numbers, and in a couple of weeks, we get in a room and together, the all parties, FEMA, Whit, State, Town, and we just, you know, have a marathon until we agree.
Okay, so it's a couple of weeks versus a couple of months?
Yeah, we're talking, yeah, we're talking, you know, like weeks, months' time, as weeks as opposed to months like we were in the past.
Right. Good, okay. And I think you've answered this, but just so I'm clear, this, the, this consultant, this technical assistant consultant that comes in, their, their findings are not binding in any way, are they? They just become part of the conversation?
Well, what happens is, they'll get together, they'll say A, B, and C. The end result is, what closes it, closes isn't quite the right word, but what the next step of semi-finality is that FEMA issues a PW, Project Worship. So... Well, it's, it's, well, you either meet the fifty percent rule or not.
Okay.
If you meet the fifty percent rule, you know, there's, there's, you know, then there's, you know, the greatest risk is of the elevation, I guess.
I know.
It's an expensive part of the project.
Okay. All right. Good. Any further questions?
No, thanks for the clarification.
No, I appreciate the update and the answers, it's, it's helpful, thank you.
All right, Mr. Mayor, thank you.
Thank you.
That's done, moving on to item nineteen, to here and consider and act upon any communications, none that I'm aware of. Item twenty, to here consider and act upon any other business that shall promptly come before this board, none that I'm aware of, open to a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
A second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you.